Good morning, everyone. Happy Thursday. Welcome to Briefing, and today we're going to have in the Kevin Freibot Show. He's up for 90 minutes. We're talking about the review of the Comprehensive Plan Amendment and Applications. Kevin, welcome.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to see you all. And it is definitely 90 minutes of me, and I don't want to torture you all too much. So what we're going to do today is we'd like to break this into two parts. We've got the Comprehensive Plan Amendments is the first part, and then I want to talk to you about land capacity and growth analysis that we're doing for the overall Comprehensive Plan Update. And to start us off with the Comprehensive Plan Amendments, I'd like to bring up, my brain just went Brandon, who's going to talk to you about the six applications we have this year. And then, of course, we're both available. And Casey's here as well, because one of the applications is related to the South Logan Project, which she managed, and so we'll kind of tag team you today, if that's okay.
Thank you.
Okay, like Kevin said, my name is Brandon Whitmarsh, and I will be presenting the 2023-2024 Comprehensive Plan Amendments in conjunction with Casey Downey and Kevin Freibot. As a reminder, this, we're kind of nearing the end of a 14-month process in total that started back in the fall of 2023, when we accepted applications for Comprehensive Plan Amendments. We're now nearing the end. We had a Plan Commission hearing on October 9th, after public comment periods over the summer, and we're looking towards a November 25th hearing with the council. In total, we have six applications this year, all for proposed amendments to the Land Use Plan Map and zoning map. And two of these applications are city-sponsored applications. Any questions before I go into the first application? Okay, sounds good. The first application is Z23474 Comp, which we are calling Mission and Sinto. And this is at the intersection of Mission Avenue and Napa Street in the Chief Gary Park neighborhood. To, just for context of where we are, to the west, two blocks is Stevens Elementary; to the east, three blocks is Chief Gary Park. And this is at Mission and Napa. The original application was by Family Promise of Spokane for the four properties that they own at this corner, which includes their offices, two single-family homes, and a parking lot. At the docketing stage, this was expanded to include an additional parcel along Mission Avenue for consistency, and as well as converted to a city-sponsored application. So in total, this is five parcels and 1.5 acres. The existing Land Use Plan Map designation for that northwest parcel that has their offices is split between mini-center and residential low, and the remaining proposal area is residential low. And the proposed designation is mini-center for the entirety of that northwest parcel, and then office for the remainder of the proposal area. The existing zoning is split for that northwest parcel between neighborhood retail with a height of 35 feet and R1 for the remainder of that parcel, as well as the remainder of the proposal. Maybe. There we go. And the proposed zoning designation for that northwest parcel is neighborhood retail with a height of 40, and office retail with a height of 40 for the remainder of the proposal area. And that 40-foot height modifier was requested to give a little bit more flexibility, but also it's consistent with the height allowed in the R1 surrounding uses, which was increased through the recent housing regulation changes. Staff recommended approval on this proposal, and so did Plan Commission. So, yes.
So you said right now it's a mini-center? Is that what I heard you say, or did I mishear that?
Yes, so it's, the northwest parcel is included in the mini-center that's there. And so we're just, the proposal is to expand the mini-center like 10 feet, just so that the entirety of that parcel is one land use and one zoning designation.
Okay. And then, I'm just trying to think about exactly where this is. So how close is this to where we've done some of the transit-oriented development work?
So this is to the east. I mean, we're talking six or seven blocks east of the river, which, the river is the boundary, the eastern boundary for the South Logan Plan.
Yeah.
And of note, the Bus Rapid Transit Line, the city line, does have stops immediately adjacent to this proposal.
Well, and that's where I'm wondering. I mean, this almost feels like we're not necessarily going maybe as far as we could or should, given that the central city line goes right through there. This is a transit-oriented development area. I just, I just wonder if there isn't some options to, you know, further increase the allowable use?
I guess my response would be that this is what was requested by Family Promise, and this is outlining what, the vision for their properties, and it doesn't expand outside of, like, thank you.
And I get it for theirs, but you're talking about expanding it beyond theirs, correct?
Sorry, what was that?
You're expanding it beyond just what they've requested, if I'm understanding this correctly?
By one parcel.
That's it, just one parcel?
Just one parcel, yes. So the one parcel on the east that has the dotted line is the only additional expansion, which the City Council voted to include at the docketing stage, so that the entirety of that Mission frontage would be...
Okay, so it's just that one?
Yeah.
And so is that one property owned by Family Promise? Or is that a single-family owner or another business?
That's one single-family home. The remainder of the properties are owned by Family Promise and operated as their facility currently.
Okay, all right.
So if I can just respond to, I think, your comments, Councilmember Cathcart, really fast. There's two things. The first is, in these proposals, we are somewhat limited in that we can't necessarily expand beyond what we've really been out talking about with the public. So I think the question about should there be more here, even more here, is really a good question for us to ask during the Comprehensive Plan Update, where we will be out asking those questions, and we anticipate that this is an area we would look at for that kind of expansion. But under this process, we were, we were kind of limited to just the boundaries of what the docketing committee told us to look at. So I hope that clarifies.
Yeah, thank you.
Are there any other questions on this proposal? Okay. The next proposal is Z23476 Comp, which we're calling Eighth Avenue. And this is at the interchange between I-90 and US-195 in the West Hills neighborhood. As you can see, to the south is that interchange. To the north is Sunset Boulevard. To the west is Sunset Boulevard and Government Way. And to the east is kind of a bluff down to Leatok Creek. The original application here was for three parcels, which has the offices of Northwest Renewables, a single-family home, and a vacant parcel. And at the docketing stage, this was expanded to include the four single-family homes to the west, as well as, at the applicant's request, the right-of-way to the east. And the right-of-way, like I said, is included at the applicant's request. The parcels to the west were included to ensure that those homes were not surrounded by more intense land use and zoning designations. Since the docketing committee, we have received a request from the applicant to reduce the size of the right-of-way that is included in this proposal. They didn't need as much as was originally asked for. And so the graphics shown today are consistent with that revised request, as well as the Plan Commission recommendation to do that revised request. But the staff report will have that larger area, which was what was noticed and what was in figures before this point. In total, this is 3.9 acres over seven parcels and some right-of-way. The current Land Use Plan Map designation for these properties is a mix of office, residential low, neighborhood retail, and conservation open space for that right-of-way. And the proposal is to change the Land Use Plan Map designation for the entirety of the area to general commercial, which is consistent with the land use to the north and west, as well as the more intense mini-center to the northwest. The existing zoning is a mix of neighborhood retail and office with heights of 35 feet, as well as R1. And the proposal is to change the zoning designation to community business with a height of 55 feet, once again consistent with the zoning to the north and west of the proposal area. Staff recommended approval of the original application and the expansion to the west, but it was unclear on, kind of where the conservation open space and right-of-way, where the Comp Plan fell on that proposal. And so we left that to Plan Commission to come up with a recommendation, and their recommendation was to include that right-of-way, but at the revised boundary, and not the larger boundary that was originally proposed. The third application we have is File Z23474 Comp, which we are calling Vemis and Russell. And this is one of two that are immediately adjacent to each other in the West Hills neighborhood along Sunset Boulevard. So this application is for just two parcels totaling 0.84 acres, and they are vacant parcels surrounded to the northeast and south by different commercial uses, mix of multifamily residential, office, hotel uses. And it's a little hard to see, but you can see to the west, the hashed areas are the immediately adjacent proposals, parcels. And the two parcels are about half of the size of the overall designation change. Everything to the south is right-of-way. This is extremely wide right-of-way between Birch, Sunset Boulevard, and the ditch that's between them. And so this is just to ensure consistency in our Land Use Plan Map all the way to that center line of Sunset Boulevard. The existing Land Use Plan Map designation is residential low, and the proposal is to amend that to general commercial, consistent with what is to the northeast and south. And the neighboring proposal, which is a separate proposal, is looking to do the exact same thing. So if that proposal was also adopted, this would be surrounded by general commercial. For zoning, the existing zoning is R1, and the proposed zoning is general commercial with a height of 75 feet. Originally, the application was for 70 feet. At that time, that was the allowed height, or one of the allowed height options for general commercial. We have since updated our allowed heights, and 75 feet is a new allowed height. And so the application, or the applicant has requested that that 75 feet be the new height for the general commercial zone, and Plan Commission also recommends that change. So yeah, Plan Commission recommends approval of this proposal as it's surrounded by general commercial, and with that 75-foot height modifier. The next application is Z23478 Comp, Assembly in Vemis. And like I said, it is immediately adjacent to the previous proposal, just to the west of it, and totaling 5.2 acres and 17 parcels. It is vacant for the most part, except for one single-family home that is in the expansion area, which we'll see in a second. We're kind of split into three different areas for this proposal. The original application was, is outlined by the number one, and was nine parcels and 3.3 acres. City Council expanded that proposal to include the area labeled with number two at the docketing stage, and that was to prevent those two single, or that single-family home, but those two parcels, from being surrounded by general commercial for consistency. And then there is a portion of the third parcel, which has apartments to the north, that were include, were included to adjust a mapping discrepancy. And then after docket, after docketing, the applicant requested additional parcels, which are outlined in the Area 3. And those are five additional parcels and 1.26 acres. And these were included in all noticing, all figures after that point, all included in the SEPA, included in all environmental review. However, they weren't technically part of the docket. And so the existing Land Use Plan Map designation for the entirety of the proposal area is R1, or residential low, sorry. And the proposal is to change to general commercial, again, consistent with what is to the south and to the east. And, but there is residential low to the north and northwest. The existing zoning designation is R1, and the proposal is to change that to general commercial with, once again, the height of 75 feet, which Plan Commission also recommends that change to 75 feet. And then office retail with a height of 55 feet for just the sliver of the parcel to the north, so that the entirety of that parcel has the same land use and zoning. Yes.
What is in the area there, just to the north of the general commercial, the red, the kind of the big square below the R1? Do we know, is that housing? Is there housing in there? Or is that vacant?
Are you talking about the, on the west side? The gray, the gray boxes you see in the R1?
Well, yeah, yeah, so on that side, but just the first box, just directly above.
That's a single-family home.
That is.
Yeah, the, there's a single-family home in the parcel immediately north, and then the next parcel also has a single-family home with some outbuildings.
Unlike the previous application, this is not surrounded by a general commercial, as you're pointing out. So staff did not have a recommendation on this proposal. Plan Commission did recommend the proposal and the inclusion of those additional five parcels, because they were noticed, as well as with the Comp Plan Amendments being suspended for the next two and possibly three years, the inclusion of that, those parcels now, as they're continuing to secure ownership, would ensure that they can develop in that timeframe. And for the final private application, File Z23479 Comp. And this is on Indian Trail in the Balboa, South Indian Trail neighborhood. This application was from Excelsior Wellness for 33 acres and seven parcels. At the docketing stage, portions of three additional parcels were included. Two of them are seen here. One has been removed at the Plan Commission record. So this is the Plan Commission recommendation in map form. One was removed, and I'll explain a little bit as to why later. But in general, this is the property for Excelsior Wellness, surrounded by residential uses. There are some cultural resources on the site, as well as a significant amount of undeveloped land. The existing Land Use Plan Map designation is residential low, and the proposed Land Use Plan Map designation is a mix of potential open space, residential moderate, and general commercial. And that potential open space, again, is to provide some protections for that cultural resource that is on the site. And then a mix of residential and general commercial throughout the site. The existing zoning is R1, and the proposed zoning is residential multifamily and community business with a height of 55 feet, consistent with those land use designations.
Hey, Brandon, that dashed little area?
Councilmember, do you want to speak up a little bit?
Yeah, can you guys not hear me?
Hang on one second, I'm trying to raise the volume.
They're raising it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
There you go.
All right. Hey, Brandon, on the, sorry, can I see that, that map again?
I think the slides have disappeared.
Okay. So on the, on the Excelsior one, that dashed area up, you know, in the, in the left there, whatever came of that portion? Were we able to work something out with the property owners there?
So the, the two portions that you see with the dashed line, the two portions of those parcels, the, the, one of the homeowners had questions, but no actual opposition to what's there. They both have, both owners have indicated that they're not desiring to sell those portions. They want to use those themselves. And the ultimate, the result is that while, even if the zoning was to change from R1 to RMF, it certainly wouldn't stop them from using that for their homes or for accessory structures for their homes or anything. It's simply, because single-family homes are still allowed in RMF. There's still, there's still, nothing would require them to sell it. Nothing would require them to stop using it. It's just better for the map as far as consistent depth from Indian Trail more than anything else, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, is there any requirements, then, depending on what Excelsior does, to invest or provide some additional capacity on Indian Trail? I'm just curious, is there any aspect of this that might improve that?
As far as transportation?
Yeah.
Yeah, Brandon's going to get to that in just a second.
Okay.
Perfect transition. So Plan Commission recommended, recommended an approval, or the removal of the, a third parcel that was originally included as an expansion at the docketing stage. And that was because that, the addition of that property was meant to expand that protection area for the conservation open space around that cultural resource. In having more time to review that, the planned unit development plans, as well as the plat, that land was undevelopable, so there was no reason to have the redundancy from the map to protect that cultural resource. It's already protected. Additionally, originally, the application was for conservation open space. The Comp Plan is pretty clear that conservation open space is meant for publicly owned land. This is not publicly owned land, so the Plan Commission recommendation was to change the land use from conservation open space to potential open space, or the proposed land use to potential open space around that cultural resource. And then finally, with the commercial, as well as the concerns about traffic impact, ICM is asking additional information as well. Plan Commission recommended a development agreement to kind of identify and address those concerns ahead of development. And so the recommendation from Plan Commission was to include these five topics in that development agreement, a site plan that shows where the housing is going, or like, where the buildings are going to be, multimodal circulation, so you can see where roads are going to be, where pedestrian facilities are going to be, development details for ICM, again, understanding what the traffic impacts will be of the proposal in its entirety, and not just a portion that might come in for a building permit in chunks over time. And then considerations of limitations on those commercial uses, with there being a concern about the impact of commercial, and just the intensity of this proposal in a predominantly single-family area. The, this would allow a conversation about whether drive-throughs are necessary or should be allowed in this, because community business as a zoning designation is fairly open when it comes to allowed uses. And so this would be the opportunity to, to look at limitations to that. That might be more right-sized, if you will, for this proposal. And then, oh.
Sorry, if I could ask, this will be a separate action, though, right? When we, if we were to approve the zoning change, that this would not be a part of it, per se? This would be a separate agreement?
So the zoning change would be contingent on completing this. So the way the ordinance is written is that the city and the property owner have, and would be legal, and other people would have a year to process that development agreement, which would go through Plan Commission and come back to the City Council. And then, once that agreement is, is complete, then 30 days later, this would become effective.
Brandon, could you explain me what, you keep using the term "cultural resource." What is the cultural resource we're referencing on this property?
So on the site is a resource of importance to the tribal community. We're being, we're being purposefully cagey, because whenever there's a cultural resource, if you're too specific, or you point out, you'll notice it's not marked. if you're too specific, or you point out, you'll notice it's not marked on the map. We don't want anyone intruding and trying to, to do anything to it. It's a known resource, it's one that the tribe is aware of, it's one that the property owner's aware of, they actually have an agreement between them for its protection. And that's, that's the purpose of that open space area around it. But I, I could, I could show you the report, I'd be happy to show you the report.
Any additional questions on this before we move on to South Logan? Then I will leave it to Casey. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Council. We're transitioning to the city-sponsored application, Z24105 comp, associated with South Logan Transit Oriented Development, or TOD project. The proposal is located within the South Logan subarea, which goes to the north to about Indiana Avenue, goes to the east to River, Mission Park, is bordered in the south by the river, and goes as far west as Leger Wood. The area has approximately 361 acres and 604 parcels. Also of note is the city line has three stations within this subarea. This was really the impetus of the South Logan TOD project, wanting to find ways to bring people to the area to benefit from and support the bus rapid transit. This proposal is based off of the South Logan TOD plan, which was adopted by Council in January. This plan had a 20-month process with numerous touchpoints with the community, and the result of that was the final subarea plan, which provides a framework, policies, guidance for the future development for the area, also included a final environmental impact statement that looked at the environmental review, potential impacts and mitigation for the envisioned growth. Both identified a preferred alternative of what that future growth would look like. The preferred alternative had specific zones, land uses, heights, that is what we're currently looking at implementing. This is actually the second phase of implementation of the plan. Area-specific and citywide code amendments were processed and approved in July. Now that we have the code in place, we're looking to actually change the land uses and zones. To that end, currently, there are six land uses in this area. This is a relatively small portion of the city, so a goal of the South Logan TOD plan is really to consolidate, have more consistency within the area, as well as to increase capacity for intensity and more uses within the area. So the proposal is to go down to four land uses. This includes the expansion of institutional land uses to all of the university-owned properties within the area, getting rid of general commercial, expanding centers and corridors, and increasing the intensity of the residential land uses in that area. There are 12 zoning designations, again, in a relatively small portion of the city, so we are significantly reducing that. The proposal is to go to four zoning designations. There is some variety with height modifiers, but really, the intent is to increase the residential intensity, consolidate the context area, or form a code to make it more usable, and to really support the centers, employment center that is already there in the area. Of note, the height around Mission Park has been brought up in comments both during this process, but also during the South Logan TOD plan process. There've been similar comments about 75 feet being around Mission Park. Those comments are in the packet for the project, but, so they're documented there. Come on. There we go, thank you. So Plan Commission did recommend approval of this proposal, as is compliance with the adopted South Logan TOD plan. Kind of as what Spencer talked about earlier, I did want to note that this proposal is following the final environmental impact statement. So theoretically, you could reduce the intensity within the area, reduce a zone intensity, reduce a height, but you can't increase the height or increase any intensity in the zones without us having to hit pause and look at a potential ability to do further environmental review.
Has any of those intensities differed, changed from what was approved back in January and kind of what was expected?
No, this proposal mirrors the preferred alternative that was in the plan. And if there are no other questions on this proposal, next steps for all of the comprehensive plan amendments, we are on the consent agenda for urban experience since you're hearing from us today. We will have first reading on November 18th, and you will hear from us with our public hearing on November 25th.
Have there, have there been any of these that were not approved, not brought before us at all? That, that, that the Plan Commission declined or anything like that? We were hearing everything that was approved?
Yep.
From the docket?
Every one of the applications that was in the docket has been recommended for approval by Plan Commission, and it's been shown here.
Perfect.
All right. Thank you, thank you, thank you. So the, so that, that concludes the comprehensive plan amendments. This next topic is a little longer look. It's, it's, this is part of our ongoing efforts for Plan Spokane, which is the, the next update to the comprehensive plan. And ultimately, today, what I'd like to do is, is give you a, a little bit of a refresher and an overview on what we're doing when it comes to capacity, as far as what the city, city's capacity to accommodate additional growth. I do have some new information today, I have some preliminary numbers for you, and I think you'll find it interesting, but I'm always happy to answer questions as well. So let's see if I've got this right. There we go. So the, the meat of what I'd like to talk to you about today is the land capacity analysis. If you were around last round, it was called the land quantity analysis, but really, it's more than just quantity, it's about capacity. And so we are on the cusp of having completed the draft report, and I have some preliminary information for you on it. But know that this is a required early step in the comprehensive plan update process. Every community in the, in the region's doing it, the county's doing it, and we're all working together to, to find out really, what, how many people can we accommodate, and how many people, and do we need to change some things in order to do that? The base question of the land capacity analysis is, does the city have enough land to accommodate our 20-year growth? And if, if we answer no, if we find that we don't have enough room, there are certain things that have to happen. The very first thing to consider, then, is to increase our zoning and our density to allow for that capacity. That's what GMA says is step one. If we can't do that, then we have to look at the wider land use and the growth strategy for the city. And ultimately, the last step would be to consider expanding. So either annexing areas outside the city, or some other effort to, maybe another jurisdiction could expand to take some of that. This is all kind of coordinated together, but sometimes the land capacity analysis is seen as a tool where we get to get bigger. No, the last step would be to expand or to grow, and that's commensurate with GMA. That's the whole purpose, really, is to look at densifying the center first before you get any bigger. In this case, the LCA in a nutshell is essentially a regional effort, but it's locally conducted, which, what I mean by that is, the Steering Committee of Elected Officials recommends, and the Board of County Commissioners adopts, a methodology that we all follow. And within that methodology, there's a lot of leeway as to how the analysis is conducted, but we all kind of follow the same path to get to the answer, so that they're comparable, we can look at jurisdictions and other jurisdictions and see how we're all sharing this, this demand across the county. So the, the method's the same, but maybe the results and some of the more detailed analysis is different by jurisdiction. And the, the, it's really in a three-step process. The first, we look at how much land is available, and we do that by classifying land into a couple different buckets, and I will make, I will go through those in a minute. And then we take that available land and we convert it to homes, we convert those homes to people. And that's ultimately how we know, do we have enough room? Those local population, and now population and housing allocations, those are also determined regionally. The Steering Committee of Elected Officials recommends, the Board of County Commissioners will adopt, an allocation for each jurisdiction. The population allocation has been done. So we know what our population expectation is for 2046, everyone else knows theirs, and that's what we're working to accommodate. Housing is coming, we're getting close, but every time we think we've got it exactly right, we find that there's a new way to do, to look at it, or there's a new facet that we haven't, we did not anticipate. And part of that is because we're all under a new system this year with housing, and I'll go to that at the very end of the presentation. So our population allocation, the county itself is expected to grow by 100,000 people between 2023 and 2046. The last round, the last time we did this, was between 2017 and 2037, and we were expecting 84,000 people in the county. Clearly, we've outstripped that. I think I've shown some of you the, the growth charts, that, that we, we, we didn't blow it out of the water. We weren't out of the realm of possibility, but growth in the county and growth in the city outstripped what we expected. And accordingly, this new round of projections is, is increased. So last time, we were expecting about 84,000 people in 20 years, now we're looking at about 100,000 people in a little more than 20 years. The city of Spokane, our share of that is about 23,000 people over 20, well, it's 23 years, technically. The horizons are all different sometimes on these, it's because of the way the state gives us the projections that we work with. So just know that we're looking at about 1,000 people a year through the planning horizon. That, you know, that's about, so far, what we know, and what we've been able to see since 2023, and there isn't a lot, it's only been a few years, is we're still right on the money. We're still right around 1,000. But know that population growth is not steady. It will grow in some months, it'll, or some years, it'll be less in others, but on average, we're right on the curve. And also, it's also important to note that while the county overall is growing much more than, than maybe we expected in the past, the city's, you know, the city's land is still the city's land. We're the largest land, largest incorporated jurisdiction in the county, and a lot of our land is built, a lot of our land is, is already occupied. And so naturally, over time, our share of future growth, the amount of that growth that we capture in the city of Spokane will go down. And this projection does show that. When, with the last round of projections, we went from about a quarter of the growth, 24.8% of the growth in the county, we're now a little less, 23, what is it, 23.3, so 23.3% of the county. That's natural, and that's totally normal. That doesn't mean fewer people are moving here, that just means that there's so many people moving here, and there's so many jurisdictions involved, that our share of the overall growth is a little less. So we, we have to find homes for those folks, basically. And what do we, the way, one of the ways we do that is we categorize the land that we have available. There is the built environment, we don't necessarily look at that and say there's capacity there. There is in some regards, but in general, we take the, if there's a, if there's an apartment building on that bill, on that land, we, we assume that that land is going to stay that way. So for the other, other properties, there's three categories that we, we put them into, vacant, generally undeveloped, and I say generally undeveloped because we make allowance for things like, you know, a, a one-acre parcel with a gravel parking lot and a light standard is, it might have some value, it might have, it might be considered developed by some people, it's not for this purpose. Yes, sir?
What's that minimum value, is it like 50,000 or?
We started at $5,000 of improvement value, however, every jurisdiction can do a more detailed analysis. I used that to start with, but when we were going through and selecting vacant parcels, we made a judgment call on some where we knew that, you know, okay, it's got, you know, maybe it's got four lights and it's $1,000, or it's, you know, it's $10,000 of improvement value, we might have still marked it vacant. So it's just, the 5,000 is where we start with, but we can get more detail. So vacant, just consider vacant vacant. It might have a shed on it, it might have a garage on it, but it's not worth, it's not worth enough to say that this won't be capacity someday. Partially used, partially used are for those large lots that have one house on them, and that house is maybe older, doesn't have a lot of value. Or we have, sometimes we will have where it's a two-acre parcel and only an acre has developed. And there's enough room there with our minimum lot sizes and with other development factors that you have capacity there, even though this site is technically developed. So partially used, if you just consider that, it's a big, the, the, what I think of is, is more common in the county, where you have a farmhouse with 10 acres around it, they don't farm anymore, and, you know, someday, they might subdivide that into more houses. That's what partially used is trying to capture. Underutilized are those lands where maybe the city has upzoned that area in the past 20 years, but there's still a single-family house on it. We do have quite a lot of that, especially adjacent to division, and also, a lot of our centers and corridors around them are higher-density residential uses, but they're still full of single-family homes. That's technically underutilized. What it means is that if someone was to raise the home to the ground, they could build much more dense. That's what that's trying to capture. We also take out areas where there isn't capacity, and that's, you know, things like steep slopes, unstable soils, we have all that mapped, and we take that out of the capacity. So it might be a vacant parcel, but if the topography is like this, we're not going to call that vacant, because it's not likely to be developed. We take out any critical areas or wetlands. Also, we take out land that we know is needed for other purposes. So there is quite a bit of a vista land that does not have a power transmission corridor on it, but we know one's coming, we don't include that. Cemeteries and their expansionaries, unless we have specific evidence or information from them that they're looking to, to maybe disinvest some of their property, generally, things like cemeteries, we leave them alone. You know, sports stadiums, those kinds of things. We take out municipal properties, too. And then anything else that we have that has some information. There's some county land that we happen to know is a brownfield site, it's contaminated, the fact is, it's not going to be houses in our lifetime, probably. We took that out. Also, if there is a large lot, say we have a 10-acre residential parcel that's vacant, we assume 15% of that parcel is going to be roads, sidewalks, and parks. So we take that out for the large lot, not for the small lot stuff, no one's going to put a road through their single-family lot. But if it's bigger, if it's, generally, if it's over two acres, we assume 15% of the land is lost to things like roads. So we have our, you know, we have our three categories of land, we've taken out some things for, for these kind of factors, and what we're left with is an amount of land that can hold capacity, that can take some homes. These are, these are preliminary numbers, they're getting updated all the time because we're continually improving as we go through. But in general, we have about 3,000 acres of vacant land in the city of Spokane. That's vacant, developable, and can provide some capacity. I'll show you a graphic split for the different amounts, but the vast majority of that is, you know, two-thirds of that is residential, residentially zoned and ready to now. Partially used, about 1,300 acres, and underutilized, a further 1,000 acres. Yes, sir?
You're talking about cemeteries and wanting to know specifically if there's a plan to do something different. Are we also thinking specifically if there's a plan for the underutilized properties to do something different?
Yeah, we will factor that in if we have, if we have, the way the LCA is built, and it's, it's actually rather elegant, and it is, it has a series of assumptions that you can use, unless you know better. So if you know more, or you have a study, or you have, you already are in communication with an applicant, you can use that information. And a perfect example of that is the South Logan TOD EIS that we just talked about. We, that EIS says there is this development potential for housing in this area. We're going to use that, because that was a technical analysis, it was done as part of a public process, it's better and more informed than maybe the basic LCA process could do. And so we're going to use that.
And so did that process include, you know, direct conversation surveys with those property owners to, to glean whether or not that's the case? They might be owning that property, but the plan is 30 years out, and, you know, it's a retirement thing, you know?
There's, there's a factor that's applied for things like, we can't know if we haven't spoken to the, to the property owner. In very few cases, we do know from the property owner or from their agent that they're looking to redevelop, and then we'll, we can, we can accommodate that. For those other times, there are property owners that, they might be in a partially-used parcel, and they like it. They want a two-acre parcel with a single-family home on it. But we can't survey every single property owner. There's 81,000 parcels in the city of Spokane, there's no way we could do it. So to accommodate the unknown in the LCA is something called market factor. We do all this math and all this spreadsheet work and mapping, and then we chop 30% off. And that 30% loss, it's just a mathematical thing, it's not by location. That 30% loss is there to accommodate those things we can't know. Are they ever going to sell this property? Are they ever going to redevelop this property? There's no way to know on a site-by-site basis, so we put a factor at the end, the market factor, and we take that off.
Okay. I guess, I just want to make sure, big picture, we're not simply trying to assume, you know, with like Boca being in place, for example, theoretically, yeah, you could tear down a house and build, you know, a four, four-unit. We're not assuming that that's the case, and?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, no, yeah, you, you can on any, any single-family lot in the city that's not under a covenant or some kind of homeowners association, you could tear the house down, you could put six units on that thing.
Because theoretically, that could be considered underutilized, I mean, if you really think about it, so.
We are not assuming that everything has that capacity. We are trying to be as conservative and realistic as we can with the information that we have.
And then do you synthesize this down into what this might equal in units?
Yeah, I'm getting there. And, and ultimately, the report will be much more specific than what I can share today. We're still working on refining the data, making it clear. So we've got these acres. The next slide actually is kind of cool. This is, this is how those vacant, partially-used, and underutilized parcels work out in different zoning groups. I didn't do every zoning district, because we'd be here all day. The industrials, you can see, there's a lot of The industrials, you can see, there's a lot of vacant and industrial. Keep in mind, there's a little bit of industrial in the city that does provide residential capacity. Anything that's light industrial and within a quarter mile of the river can have housing on it. And so I've accommodated that in the end of this, in the end numbers where we're starting to talk about units. But for the most part, industrial's gonna be, there's, there's not residential capacity there. Downtown, you know, we're pretty good. Centers and corridors, you'll notice it's more underutilized than vacant. That's just because, you know, it takes more than twenty years for a city to build out. Centers and corridors has been our core strategy for twenty years, but not every center has built that way yet. So you will see a lot of that as underutilized. Really, the big number, you can see residential's a big deal, which is great because we are talking about residential capacity. So all of those acres that you see in that residential bar, that's where the meat of our capacity for accommodating growth is gonna come in. Yes, sir.
So just curious with the acreage downtown, I mean, where do you see those, those areas applying?
So the downtown that you see there, the vacant is literally vacant. It's like gravel lots and open lots. The partially-used, we have, we have a lot of smaller areas downtown where, where there is, it's a, it's almost like the parcel is, one, once was two parcels, now it's one and half if it's not developed. What you don't see here, and I did, I will categorize them separately, the underutilized, you could argue that a parking lot is underutilized, a surface parking lot is underutilized. I have not done that in this analysis because of the, the, the fact that I wanted to see if we could meet our goals without having to get too creative with the numbers. However, I do have a survey of every surface lot downtown and how much land that accommodates, and I will include, most likely as a technical memo at the end, hey, by the way, surface lots downtown are using this much residential capacity. So we're considering it, but it's not in this list.
On, on that note, you know, DSP is kicking off a housing study right now, and I'm wondering, could some of that work be incorporated into this if it's done in time?
It's likely that this will be done before they're done.
Okay.
That isn't to mean that we won't wanna see, definitely wanna tell them to accommodate what they're doing. It also, as the greater comp plan effort with the EIS, we'll have to, we'll consider that information as well. The other thing to keep in mind on the LCA and these growth targets is, we have to come back in five years and look at this and see how we did. That's definitely one of the things I wanna, I have highlighted in the, in the memo and the technical memo, like, these are things we need to look at in five years, and one of them is gonna be that downtown housing study.
Well, and I think if you look five years after the 2015 LQA, we were nowhere near hitting the targets and, you know...
Correct.
So I think it's, yeah, I think we have to be real, realistic.
Yeah, absolutely. And I'm very intimately aware of that study. I'm actually helping them with their data collection and everything else, so. All right. Just to give you some visual idea of what we're talking about, everything in blue, in the dark blue here, is a parcel that has been identified as vacant. So you can see they are fairly well spread out. We do have some large lot. Keep in mind, this isn't all residentially zoned, so that large block you see in the northeast of the city, that's mostly industrial, but it is capacity, and so we're including it in the report. Also, what you can't see at this scale is a lot of infill. And while we haven't, we're, I'll get to this later, but our assumptions aren't that Boca and BOH has had a huge input on density. What it has done is it's really impelled development of those infill lots. A lot of those lots we've seen for, for pre-apps, we've seen interest in those where we had nothing before. And so keep in mind, while there is the large lot stuff that's very apparent in this image, and by the way, here's the southern half of the city, that large lot stuff is, is important for capacity. We are getting a lot of capacity from those infill lots as well. So there's the vacant lands. Here are the partially-used lands shown in red. They're, they're a little more geographically spread. Fewer of these are large, and some of these don't really provide capacities like that triangle you see in the very bottom edge, and here I'll move it up a little bit. That's airport land, it's not going to be homes. It can't be homes. And so keep in mind, not all of this is residential. And then here's our underutilized land. And our underutilized land, not surprisingly, roughly corresponds with our centers. There are areas where it's underutilized, not because of the centers. For instance, on the River Run neighborhood there, just south of Spokane Falls Boulevard, that whole area is a center, it's a, it's a neighborhood center. The PUD came, the planned unit development came in and made it all single-family. So while that's underutilized, does it represent capacity? No. They're not gonna tear down those, you know, those six-figure, those nice new homes and put in apartments. It's unlikely. So not all of this is, is gonna generate a lot of capacity, but it's important to highlight, especially east of Division there, just south of North Town Mall, you know, for almost a block, they're all, they're all multifamily, and they're all single, still single-family homes. So when we talk about the Division project, the Division TOD project, and those considerations, that's, that's where that capacity might come in. We might have to talk about that. Also on here, you'll notice South Logan's not showing up. That's fine, it's technically a lot, if you approve that comp plan amendment, we'll have a lot of new underutilized. But because we're gonna look at that area under that EIS, it doesn't need to be shown on this map.
When, when you say that we'll have to take into account the TOD for, or the Division for capacity, what do you mean by that?
Well, I mean, as we look at how Division's going to change with the NSC opening in, in ten years, let's hope it's not actually ten years. When the North Division opens, or I mean, when the, the North Spokane Corridor opens and North Division changes in nature, that's when we can maybe look at how to change the land use strategy along Division, and that might change what's underutilized and what's not. In fact, I think it might increase it a little bit because we're kinda hoping that some things will happen there.
But you're not suggesting that we take that into account today?
No.
You're just saying in five, ten years, that will be a factor?
Definitely.
Great.
And so just keep in mind, every five years, we're gonna be looking at our capacity anyway. So these are, some of these are factors that we'll wanna consider at the next round. Oop, see, I put in the fancy little animation, and then I, I don't need it that time. All right. So we have our lands, we're still refining little details and edges here, but to that land, we then have to apply some density assumptions. And this is where we have it, this is where we're going. So low-intensity residential, R1s and R2s, we're gonna assume between five and nine units per acre. That's, that's right in the realm of our density for single, single unit and middle housing. And we're gonna, we're gonna modify that, though, because density in the city is not uniform. The development that we see coming, and then the development we saw in the past, is not uniform. It isn't six units per acre in every R1 and R2 property. So what we're suggesting is we're, we're going to modify that based on the location, and I actually have a figure I'm gonna show you here in a minute that's really cool, that'll show you how that, how that looks. But just know, it's between five and nine units. RMF and RHD zones are our high-intensity residential areas. We're gonna assume twenty-nine units per acre. That's the median of what we've been seeing, and based on ten years of data, but also looking at how the housing market has changed, the development has changed. We see much more multifamily than we used to. But we, we're right around twenty-nine units per acre. Accessory dwelling units. Accessory dwelling units have increased in likelihood in the city by a huge amount. The curve goes, whoop, and it goes right up into thirty to forty a year where we had two or three. Yes, sir.
So we've, we've made a lot of good changes, but some of that, too, was waiving permit fees and all of that, and I just wonder, are we taking that into account?
Yeah. So what we're doing, what we want to do with accessory dwelling units in our assumptions is understand that those changes are so recent that we don't have enough data to say how many, where we can expect necessarily. Again, an item for five years from now, we wanna look at this again, but for this time, what we're doing is we're taking that recent activity where we've made it easier, we've made it cheaper, we made it more available, but not blow it out of the water. We're not assuming that every home puts an ADU in. We're gonna use that permit data for this time and assume that it's about thirty a year. Because ADUs are tough. It isn't, a vacant parcel isn't any more or less likely generally to have an ADU than an existing parcel. So it really, it affects every parcel in the city. So rather than try to guess where we'll see it, where we won't, we are gonna, we're gonna take us, an analysis of what we've seen and just do a number instead of doing it geographically. So we're gonna assume for the first round, thirty a year, that's six hundred and twenty years. That's not a, that's not a, a small number for us. It's definitely more than we saw ten years ago, but it's, you know, it's more in line with what we're seeing now. And we're gonna, we're gonna use those six hundred units, and then in five years, we're gonna, we're gonna have five more years of data. We're gonna look at that and, and see, is there a better way to do this? Is there a better way to estimate? But we're definitely not going nuts with it. So then we have the fact that in the City of Spokane, you can develop residential in non-residential zones. We have to accommodate for the fact that our commercial zones, our centers and corridor zones do contain residential capacity. To that end, we looked at all the permits that have been coming in for those, we've looked at some trends, and we realized that around a third of our permits are residential in nature in those areas. So we're gonna take the lands that are non-residential zones, but those that allow residential development, we're gonna chop two-thirds off and go, that's probably gonna be commercial. This is all mathematical, it's not by location. We're gonna say about two-thirds of it is, is commercial or office or whatever, but a third of it's gonna be residential. And in that third, if it's outside downtown, we're gonna assume about thirty units an acre. That's what we've been seeing outside of downtown for those permits. Downtown, we're gonna bump it up because our density definitely goes up, our number of units per acre. We're gonna, we're gonna bump that up to forty-four point four because that's what we've been seeing. Again, these are all based on math. They're not wild guesses, as much as I would love to go, woo-hoo, and just come up with a number. These are all based on actual permit data in the City of Spokane. Boca, BOH. At this point, we don't have enough data that says that Boca's gonna raise all the densities this much. What it's done is it's made it much more likely, and it's made it a lot easier, but we don't yet have enough to say, what is it gonna do to overall density? So this time, we're suggesting, we're gonna acknowledge that it's there, that it's gonna have an effect, but we don't know what it is yet, and we're not gonna rely on it for our numbers. Five years from now, definitely, we'll look at it again. Again, we're trying to be a good balance between respecting the fact that we have changed the housing paradigm in Spokane, we, the Royal, we, not, not me personally, but, you know, there's been such a change in the housing paradigm in Spokane, we wanna acknowledge that that's happened, but we don't want to go so crazy with our assumptions that we way overestimate our capacity. We wanna try to be as conservative and as realistic as we can be with the limited data that we have. Oh, I went the wrong direction. There we go. So I was talking about that single-unit density, the fact that it changes over the city, this, I'm actually rather proud of this. We did the, we did a really detailed analysis to determine how that density changes throughout the city. And you gotta realize that not every section of the city has residential, and not every section has the same amount of city land in it. But we were able to interpolate out really what density we see. So that red you see, that's closer to ten units per acre for just the low-intensity yacht lots. I'm not talking about multifamily apartments and things like that. We see closer to ten in the red areas, so west-central, parts of Emerson Garfield, downtown, of course. And then those lighter blue areas, those are the threes and fours, or fours and fives, sorry. Those are those outlying areas. And so what we're gonna do is use this map to inform an adjustment. If you're building in North Indian Trail in a large lot development, we don't expect that a builder's gonna put ten units an acre into single-family homes there. It's gonna be closer to the other side of the spectrum. But in the core, those infill lots, those really have been coming in at much higher densities. And so we'll adjust, instead of just doing a broad-brush approach, we thought this was a little more elegant and a little more interesting. And there are areas that you don't see on this map that really should be clear. The area around the airport, it really isn't, it isn't conducive to residential capacity. We don't want homes next to runways. That's a bad idea. Also, it, you'll notice there's no cutout for the river or for Riverfront Park. The ultimate factor that we use in the analysis will accommodate those areas that have zero density, residential density, anyway. Also, some things to keep in mind, planned unit developments, PUDs, there's quite a few of them in the city. They are vested, the ones that we're gonna be considering, so, and not all of them are built out. They might have been approved for a thousand lots, and they've only platted five hundred. There's five hundred units of capacity. For the purposes of this analysis, we're gonna assume that they build the way that they were approved. If they were approved for, for a thousand lots, we expect them to be a thousand lots. We'll subtract out what they've already done. There's our capacity for that area. Also, with Boca and BOH and those kinds of changes, I talked about, we're not gonna, we're not gonna apply a factor, and we're not gonna apply Boca, BOH within PUDs because most of them have covenants that prevent it. Eagle Ridge has, you know, however many homes. You wanna put an ADU in Eagle Ridge, you're gonna run into a homeowners association, not us. We're just gonna go ahead and assume for this round until we have better information, hopefully in the future, as to which ones require it, which ones restrict it. We're just gonna assume that ADUs don't go into PUDs. Middle housing does not go into PUDs, not if they've already platted. Also, I've mentioned this before, but just a reminder, if we have a better report, we have a better analysis, we're gonna use that. The LCA is what you do when you don't have better information. And so we're gonna, that method in the LCA, anyway. So the South Logan TOD EIS, definitely, it's like a cookie cutter. I take it out of the analysis because we have a much better one already for that area. Some preliminary results, and these are extremely preliminary. I've kept these very general, and I'm sorry I don't have more detail for you, but this is one of those things that's, it's the, it's the, the boogie monster that's standing over my shoulder for the last two years. We're getting close, but I don't wanna, I don't wanna be too specific until I can be sure of my numbers. But know that the PUDs, we've got about twenty-five hundred acres in PUDs, there's a hundred of them. I will have units for that, for you soon. Poor Brandon has been having to struggle through that, that challenge. Vacant areas, we have about, right now, about eleven thousand units of capacity over twenty years. Partially used, it's an additional seven thousand units. And underutilized areas, if we end up relying on that, we're still looking at it because it's such a detailed thing. But there's about ten thousand, maybe plus or minus a couple thousand in there. So just to give you an idea, we, we have quite a few units of capacity in the city right now. And our feeling at this point is that we might, we might be okay. We have, we should have enough land, we think, to accommodate the next twenty years of growth. So just as a side note, other jurisdictions that have completed this or have gotten as far as we have are finding about the same thing. Cheney completed their LCA, I think earlier this year. They had sufficient capacity. Liberty Lake feels they're gonna get there. They're about the same level I'm at, where the analysis is about three-quarters to, to, you know, to eighty percent done almost, and it's, it's looking like we're gonna have enough. But there's, you know, we're still, we're still crossing the i's and dotting the t's, as my dad says. Yes, sir.
How are you treating the Leita Valley, just given the enormous amount of questions over future development there?
Leita Valley itself, not especially in any way, although there are more PUDs down there that have already vested that take a lot of the consideration out. Again, we're assuming those, we're assuming Eagle Ridge builds like Eagle Ridge says it will. So there's also a lot in Leita that is unbuildable because of water and all that, so, but not specially. We didn't hold it out going, there's a moratorium, because this is a twenty-year horizon. I don't, I would hope that, everyone would hope that we don't still have a moratorium on anything in twenty years that started today.
Hope not.
Yeah, let's hope not.
And then, you know, when you say we might have enough land, it, it very well may be. I mean, I can remember a council member a few years ago saying we had a hundred years worth of growth inside the current city boundaries. So, but I don't think that's actually true. But, but is it realistic that we're going to hit those numbers? Because if we overproject, that can impact growth for the entire region. And I'm just curious, are we realistically going to see 17,000 housing units built in 20 years, which is, I think, our allocation?
Well, our, our population projections that, that have been adopted, that we're, we're shooting for, I think, are the best you can do with the detail that we have. They're absolutely reasonable from the information we have today. The further out you go from, from the starting point on a projection, the more likely it'll, it'll deviate from what you expect. But for now, it, it seems to be right around the money. And the, the, the fact that last round, we saw a spike in growth beyond what people expected, that's been accommodated for. That hasn't been ignored. And so, I think the new ones are as good as we can get with what we've got.
But I think the assumption, or the, the Commerce, at least, numbers that are, are we're supposed to meet is around 17,000 for...
Housing units.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For the city of Spokane. And so, a fair vacant, 11,000 units, okay, that's kind of an easy assumption. But partial, underutilized, I don't think you can assume a whole lot there that we, that will in fact get us to that 17,000 number or somewhere around it. And so, is it realistic that we are actually going to see that number? Or are we going to take too much capacity, not allow that capacity in other areas, and then we, we lose growth?
As to whether it's realistic or not, I couldn't tell you. It's this, this program, this, it's all from HB 1220 with the new housing allocations. This is all brand-new to us. It's all brand-new to Commerce. It's part of why I don't have final numbers for you because we're all struggling with how to do this the right way and to meet the law. What I can say is that's one of those big items that, that's why we have that five-year check-in. Instead of waiting eight or 10 years to make adjustments, in five years, we'll know how well we're doing, and we'll be able to make adjustments at that point. Based on the information that we have from them that seems reasonable, I mean, it's, it's, how do you test a model that you have only had for a year?
No, that, that's fair.
Yeah.
I also think it'd be good, though, and, and I think we will, obviously, GMA steering, but see this along with all the others and really get that more holistic sense to see, okay, is this real, really making sense?
Yeah. And we, actually, the, the committee, the staff level, the technical committee for reviewing all of these as a group has begun. They just, they don't have anything to review yet. So, the technical committee will be reviewing them, and then it'll go to the steering committee to look at and go, yeah, this looks like it's all kind of coming together right or not. Ultimately, they are all compared to each other to make sure that they're consistent.
Okay. Great. Thank you so much.
Yes.
So, just to muddy the waters, we're already not strongly considering Boca and all of those changes because they're brand-new. We have a presentation coming up on the 21st about land value taxation.
Mm-hmm.
First of all, I, I hope you're able to attend that so you can help us think about where that would be a good idea. But do you think if we initiated some of that in our centers and corridors, do you think that would result in more commercial development, more residential development, or maybe the same parameters that you already are factoring into your projections here?
If, if it's in the near term, the next five years, 10 years, maybe, I think that the assumptions that we have here are prob, would be pretty good as far as a third being residential and maybe two-thirds being commercial. It really, that, that market demand changes a lot, and it can change a lot in 20 years. Right now, we are in a housing emergency, which is corresponding with a housing development boom. We're seeing a great deal of housing development where 10 years ago, we saw almost nothing in centers and corridors. Is that going to change? Yeah, that might change. It's a cyclical relationship. They go up and down. I'm not sure, like, what's, what's reasonable enough? That's always the hard question. I'd be interested to go to that meeting, though, and see what they're talking about as far as how that might change over time. And we'll watch it. This is not a on-the-shelf item. It can't be anymore. And so, we'll be watching how we meet the population allocation. We'll be watching how we meet the housing allocation. Trying to think if I got, I can go into housing a little bit if there's any other questions, though. Okay. So, this is just, you know, talking about units. We're going to convert these into people, of course, and make sure that we can meet that 1,000 per year or that 20, 20-something thousand folks in 20 years. That'll be in the report as well. And that's, you know, generally, the conversion of housing to people is based on, on census data, how many people per household, and that does change over time. And we're working right now on how to, how to assume that over time, too. But we'll get, we'll convert these, we'll finalize these numbers, we'll convert them into population, and then they'll all be put into the report for you. Also, on housing, in the past, the comprehensive plan really was concerned about overall how many housing units. But with HB 1220, we are now looking at not only the number of housing units, but breaking that into affordability brackets. The percent you see here is the percent of the area median income. The total units allocated, that's that 17,000, Councilmember Cathcart, that you were talking about, that number's still kind of in flux, too. But we'll also have to look at different affordabilities. You see non-PSH and PSH, that permanent supportive housing. So, the lowest affordable, the lowest-cost housing, PSH means there's also supporting services. So, when we get into the comp plan and we're talking about policies for programs and service programs, that's where that comes in as well. But ultimately, we will end up with an allocation across this whole table, the total number, different affordabilities, as well as emergency housing. Now, emergency housing isn't just shelters, so that's why it says units and beds. Emergency housing is anything less than six months. So, for instance, a wom, a, a woman's shelter where they can live there, they can immediately move in and live there for up to six months because of, say, domestic violence, that's not necessarily, that's not the same as the Trent Shelter, but that's still emergency housing. So, keep in mind that number. That, that is also part of this process is we'll get that number. So, as of right, as of 2020, we had about 100,000 units in the city. The, the future needs for the total housing units will be probably somewhere between 15 and 17,000 new housing units. Yes, sir?
Now, but the, the previous slide, that's, that's really a paper exercise. I mean, we don't...
Oh, yeah.
We, we've generally got the policies in place. It's a paper exercise. There's no, you know, we don't have to mandate that certain housing be affordable at this level, and it's not up to the city, per se, to provide 1,100 emergency beds either, right? We just have to allow for...
Correct.
...the potential.
That's a, that's a very good distinction I should have included, so thank you. None of this is a mandated target. None of this is, there's no stick with the carrot. It's not, they're not going to, there's, we're not going to lose funding if we don't meet that. What we have to do is we have to ensure that we have enough zoning and land to accommodate